How are you today?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm okay. How's your summer been?
It's been okay.
Did you get one?
Yeah, did you?
Well, I'm retired.
Either way.
Yeah, no, I didn't go anywhere, but it's been great. And it hasn't been 100 degrees, so.
Exactly.
Did you get to go anywhere?
Um, a little bit. I mean, I went to like the river and stuff like that. And a little bit of downtown, but nothing far.
Good. Well, and you're gonna be a senior, right? Yeah, so you'll have all that time afterwards to, yeah.
Exactly.
So are you gonna go visit colleges this year?
Um, maybe. Hopefully, that would be fun. I know my friend just went, so I was hoping I could convince my parents to take me. So that would be nice.
Do you have ideas of where you'd like to go?
Um, yeah, I was thinking of doing like the JC for just like minimal classes and then working my way up. Um, I was looking at Humboldt's Communication or their Wildlife Conservation classes.
Cool.
Or there's this college called Moore Park College.
Oh, yeah.
That's like a zoo on campus.
They do, yes, yes.
And San Francisco State also has good communication.
Oh, it has an excellent communications. It's been known for it for, yeah, as long as I've been doing this. That's great. So you're interested in doing communications?
Yeah, that and wildlife conservation, so I would think it too, too.
So are you at the Wildlife?
Yeah.
Center at Petaluma High? Are you in the Broadcasting Communications? Oh, wow, that's so cool.
Yeah.
So do you feel that that's really, those classes have really sparked that pathway of yours?
Yeah. I didn't used to be much of a public speaker, like at all, like I could not talk to anyone. But taking that class really has pulled me out of my shell, so it's a lot easier to talk to people.
Yeah.
And wildlife is, I never really thought that taking care of animals would be so fun. Because even the
We trustee five, I was like trustee three or something.
We moved the areas a few times.
Yeah, we did. That was why.
And so I was wondering if that was the, if it was like the start names were changed.
Yeah, it was.
I don't know.
But yeah, I turned all my stuff in, everything's filed. I just have to, oh, that was one more thing.
Did you have to pay the $800?
Yeah, so, but then if no one else runs, so I chose the box, like if there's no opponent, then not to run my statement, because we still appear on the ballot, just unopposed on the ballot.
Oh.
But you can either have your statement or not. I'm like, no, I want $800.
Okay, so then you get, oh, okay.
So it's just your, it's just your name.
Okay.
But no statement. I'm like, well, it's just very busy. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because I, you know, I was going, that $800 is a lot if there's no one.
You probably say a thousand, because yours is in Marin, too.
Yeah, you're in Marin.
Yeah, so she was like, you're not Marin, right? I was like, no. She's like, oh, so it's eight, eight, four.
I told her yesterday that I'm the only one with Marin.
Girl, that's what I'm saying. Go over every piece of-
I told her yesterday you're the only one with Marin.
Go over every piece of paper, yeah, Kendall.
Yeah, she's new. We have emails, too. It's her first election cycle. It's mine. We've been talking this go and we're figuring it out.
But she, but like, she gave me a pack of papers. I'm like, don't you want them all back? Like everything you gave me, but it was fine. But I could tell she was a little bit nervous. Yeah, so I was like, I'll give her a grace, but I would just make sure that you give her everything, yeah.
She was sweet. So I can't find any list of all the things. She kept all the lists of all the things we have to hand in.
Oh, just everything that has to be signed is being handed in. The only like financial thing is Form 700.
But that goes to the FPP, no, that goes to the county.
County.
So I gave mine to her, but then she also said we have to email it to the county.
Yeah, I told her I'd give her one, too, just to be safe, because, but Form 700 you fill out even if you're on like a committee. It's just saying you don't have a con-
I was like, John, you just filled this out, we fill out again.
Yeah, so you do it, how do you do it all?
Like, I wish I had a fiscal.
Um, it's like, it's a, yeah.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, so did she give you the, um, like the electronic copy of the FPCC, like packet?
Did she email you that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
You took the whole stack?
All right, I did, I'm sorry.
Which is fine, you can still fill it out, but.
Ready, Carl?
Hello?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
How are you?
Calling the-
Yeah, I bet you look very relaxed and annoyed.
July 26th Board of Education meeting to order. Um, we're gonna acknowledge AB 361 and move on to comments from the public on closed session items. Do we have anyone in attendance yet?
I will, I'll call you Sheldon when we go into closed session.
Yeah. Sheldon Jen, okay. All right, so we are going to adjourn to closed session. Oh, he just wants us to call him. You okay over there?
Yep, just flinging my laptop around, it's cool. I don't need it or anything, yeah. It's not school property, it's my actual personal one.
It's like you just traded it, but now.
No, Dave, Dave can't help me.
He's carrying that one in.
Yeah, yeah. This one is seven years old.
That's great.
That's why it's so dirty. I had to replace the battery, but that's like 50 bucks. That's not bad.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. All right. Guys, I'm super excited.
Oh, he ran away.
He's gonna swear that man, so.
Is that that wretched air scrubber?
The wretched. I thought it was only wretched when it was back there. It's not as bad in here.
Yeah.
I can't hear anything.
Really?
Well.
Will you move it closer?
I'm old.
Oh.
Number one here, it's weird.
He's putting one over here, too. We're Sheldon. Okay, all right. You ready, Carl?
No way.
Okay. Um, reconvening. Um, next up is our oath of office for student board members.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to present to all of you our student board members, and I'll call them up one at a time, and we'll do the swearing in. So first up, could I have Mia Von please come forward? So Mia Von will be starting her senior year this fall at Petaluma High School and has been actively involved in school and extracurricular activities. Mia helps produce the Trojan Broadcast, which is a student-led news information announcement platform. She also participates in basketball, softball, and the Arts of Noise Club, a music club, and part of the Link Crew, a student leadership program. Fun fact, she also sung at the National Anthem for a few football games. English is her favorite subject, and she is passionate about animals. Mia is also the lead docent of the Petaluma Wildlife Museum and through that, a volunteer with Bonnie Cromwell, the woman behind Classroom Safari. Classroom Safari is an educational outreach program that brings animal ambassadors for fun, interactive experiences. Her future plans are getting through her senior year and will decide her, decide later what her career goals will be. Superintendent Harris, it is my pleasure to present to you Mia Von as a student board member selected and confirmed by the Petaluma High School Administration.
All right, so Mia Von, under Government Section 1360 and Article 20 of the State Constitution, by the power vested in me from the State of California and the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education, please repeat after me. I, Mia Von,
I, Mia Von,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies,
against all enemies
foreign and domestic,
foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith
and allegiance to the Constitution
and allegiance to the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well
I will well
and faithfully discharge the duties
discharge the duties
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Mia. So at this point, if you wanna get your stuff, we're gonna invite you to the conference. So Mia, this will be your seat now, so, this will be your seat now.
Uh, next up, I'd like to call in Alan Fong. Alan Fong will be starting his junior year at Casa Grande in the fall of 2022. A top 10 student, Alan is, excels in academics, actively participating in extracurricular activities on and off campus. Alan is part of the Casa Grande Wrestling Team, as well as the Petaluma Wrestling Club. He also participates in the Casa Grande Key Club, Pennies for Change Club, Honor Society, Interact Club, and Office, Officer of Health and Science Club. Alan also participates in various organizations focused around promoting positive change in the community, such as Together Above All, organization working to expose STEM fields to younger students, and relief organization which aims to improve environmental health through tree planting throughout Petaluma. Passionate about STEM, his future goal is to be a pediatrician. So Superintendent Harris, it is my pleasure to present to you Alan Fong as a student board member selected by and confirmed by the Casa Grande Administration.
So Alan, under Government Section 1360 and Article 20 of the State, uh, the State Constitution, by the power vested in me from the State of California and the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education, please repeat after me. I, Alan Fong,
I, Alan Fong,
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support and defend the Constitution
that I will defend and support the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State, of the States of California
against all enemies
against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith
and allegiance
and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well
that I will well
and faithfully
and faithfully
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
upon which I am about to enter
upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Alan.
At this time, I'd like to call on Julian Bautista. Julian will be continuing on as a senior this fall at Sonoma Mountain High School and anticipated to be an early graduate. Julian has 100% attendance rate this past year and earned a perfect 4.0 for the previous year. Julian is also active in, in activities and in out of school and was one of the students who was on our student panel during our LCAP meetings, as well as a part of the LCAP Committee itself. He also was one of the students representative, I just said that. Julian also has a passion for music and is musically talented and a great trumpet player, player that I've heard. He also enjoys riding motorcycles and currently working at Bike Mechanics at Bike Bowl Bike Shop here in Petaluma. Julian's future plan is to pursue law enforcement after he graduates from high school, and he will be on a ride along this Friday with the Petaluma Police Department.
Good for you.
Superintendent Harris, it is my pleasure to present to you Julian Bautista as a student board member selected and confirmed by the Sonoma Mountain High School Administration.
Julian Bautista, under Government Section 1360 and Article 20 of the State, uh, the State Constitution, by the power vested in me from the State of California and the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education, please repeat after me. I, Julian Bautista,
I, Julian Bautista
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support and defend
that I will support
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
the Constitution of the United, of California
State of California
State of California
against all enemies
against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith
and allegiance
allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well
that I will well
and faithfully
faithfully
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
upon which
upon which
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Julian. So I just, I just wanna welcome, welcome our student board members. I know you had a little chance to talk with, with Mr. Hua here earlier. Uh, we're gonna be doing some orientation throughout the next few weeks, including some, hopefully some one-on-one time with some of our, our board members. And we're just very excited to have you. When, you know, we, last year was our first year having student board members, and we really wanna encourage and acknowledge student voice. And so before every time we, we take a vote, President Fong will be asking for your opinion or trying to get a, trying to get a sense for what you think about these issues before we, we, we continue. So welcome to the board.
All right, welcome. All right, next up, comments from the public on non-agendized items. If there's anyone who is in attendance online and you would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda, now is the time to do so. We're gonna open up the chat for a few minutes while I read our public comment policy. So if you have something you'd like to speak about, please put your first and last name in the chat and what you would like to speak about. Under Government Code Section 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While Government Code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a specific policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. Okay, looks like we have one. All right, Susan.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, um, so my name is Susan Smith. I teach science at Petaluma High School. I have undergone four joint replacement surgeries. I've learned the hard way that Petaluma High School is extremely inaccessible for those with mobility issues. Every door to enter hallways and classrooms is a heavy fire door that must be pulled open. None of them have any assist or auto opener of any sort. The first time I realized this, I was using a mobility scooter, being only four weeks post-operative and unable to go long distance with either cane or walker. I had to get out of the scooter, open the door, engage the doorstop, which was really hard to do after hip replacement, get back in the scooter, drive through the door, get back out of the scooter, disengage the doorstop, get back in the scooter. Even after recovery, while I use my rolling backpack, getting through those heavy doors before they whoop you in the butt can be difficult and awkward. You might consider this a non-issue, as most of the time there are helpers and classmates. But will that always be true? Imagine a mobility impaired student striving for independence, but they have to ask for help and an escort just to use the bathroom. Consider this, how often do you use an auto opener when it's available? Think about those curb cutouts and ramps that were designed for wheelchairs but turned out to be heavily used by people with canes and strollers. On back-to-school night and open house, how many parents do we see with strollers, canes, and wheelchairs? Even a perfectly healthy and able student will appreciate auto openers when they are wearing a backpack, carrying a musical instrument, and juggling their art project, gym bag, and maybe that cup of Starbucks. I ask that our auto door openers be added to the main entrances of the main building at Petaluma High School, which includes access to the main office, the Student Assistance Center, A, B, and C wings, and the library. I also ask they be installed in the D wing, as they should have been when it was recently remodeled. I am frankly amazed we've gone this long without them. And I gotta warn you, I'm sure there's an ADA violation in here somewhere. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Okay, thank you. Looks like that was the only public comment. Do you see any more, Matthew? All right, um, next up, adoption and approval of the agenda.
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Not yet. Oh, yeah. No, Matty needed to amend it.
Is that when I do it?
Yeah.
Not at, not at consent agenda?
Oh, was it? No, because it's-
For the whole agenda?
Either way, I guess.
Okay, I'll do it now.
Okay.
So, um, at, uh, on, in the consent agenda, item 17 and 18, I think it's basically number 18. It says it wants the board to approve the contract with Health Connect. It should be Blend Education. They had Health Connect twice.
So on the online version, it says,
On the online version, it says-
It says that the recommended action is to approve Health Connected for 17 and 18, when it should be Health Connected for 17 and Blend Education for 18.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I move to-
Do you wanna-
Is that what it still says? I don't know if it still says.
I'm not on.
I, so the agenda items, I believe the actual agenda items are correct.
Okay.
But, uh, just the recommendation for the board to approve. So what you could do is make your motion that just clarifies that for item 18, um, the approval is with the contract with Blend Education LLC.
Yeah, yeah.
But the, the agendized items are correct. It's just the recommended approval that's, right, seems to be off.
So to amend the recommended approval with the contract to read Blend Education LLC instead of Health Connect on item 18.
I'll second.
Wait, can you say it again?
Yeah.
Okay. So online, it says that, so on every item, there's like a recommended action from staff. On a specific item, the recommended action on number 18 is just accidentally copied and pasted from item 17. So twice it says to, that the recommended action is to approve Health Connected, when it's really to move Health Connected and then Blend Education.
Can you pull up your thing? Sorry, this new thing's not logging me in. I'm having issues with the new platform.
I think it's, yeah.
Oh, here's the meeting.
Just, just to restate it a different way, the titles are correct in that the title of the action item says, on number 18, approval of service agreement between Petaluma City Schools and Blend Education LLC, that's accurate. The recommended motion in the body of the text is all that needs to be corrected. So if actually, if the board takes action to approve all of the agenda items,
It's all good.
theoretically to Health Connect. You're taking the action for the title of the item anyway?
Yeah, so I think it's okay.
It creates confusion.
Yeah, sure.
But, sorry, I think the action-
Well, we're also saying, we're not actually approving that Blend Education is going to be doing this. We're saying that Health Connect is gonna-
No, that's just, that's just what staff is recommending.
So the title of the item, if you look at the actual title,
Right.
which is really what the action item is, it says the correct thing, which is approval of service agreement between Petaluma City Schools and Blend Education LLC. So if you're approving all of the action items, you're fine, but you could add to your motion as a point of clarification that, that's different than the recommended, that the recommended motion.
The titles are incorrect.
Right.
Just a mistake.
Like online. Right.
Okay, so-
And the actions will all automatically be correct, but we can additionally clarify if we want to.
And the contract that's attached is-
Yeah, the right, it's the right attachment.
So we have, we're approving two things, one with Health Connected and one with-
We're approving 18 things.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, and the minutes will reflect, the most important thing is that after the board takes action, the minutes will reflect the action the board took, which is to approve the agreement between Petaluma City Schools and Blend Education LLC. So the minutes will reflect that.
So it does-
But you could include that in your motion as a clarification.
I move-
Does it need to be amended then? Because this is the right-
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the clarification that on item 18, we, the recommendation is actually to approve the contract with Blend Education LLC.
I second.
Um, I'm really excited to see on item 16 that we're gonna be partnering with KAL Consulting in regards to Save Your Six. I think that that is great. I think that'll be a good PD opportunity in the fall. And that is my comment on the consent agenda.
I have yay on my name.
I don't think we're there yet, right? We're still on number seven?
No.
No.
We haven't even gotten there yet.
What did you say, Sheldon?
We only approved the agenda. I think we're on-
Okay, never mind, okay.
We're on item number nine now.
Did you have a comment about number, uh, about number eight, Sheldon?
Didn't die now.
Can you turn it up a little? I can't. We've got stuff to do before we go to the consent.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's fine, it's fine.
Well, I feel, I figured I was approving, amending the agenda.
So all in favor on number eight?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Yeah, okay. All right, um, report on activities and correspondence of school board members since the last meeting. More part of Toto's fundraisers, Go Candidate Forum, Equity Reboot Committee, Petaluma Healthcare District Rebranding Workshop.
Must be summer.
Yeah. All right, um, and then in the future, Julian, Alan, and Mia, I'll be reaching out to you if you guys can share with me your activities that take place in between board meetings, and then we just report out on those every meeting, okay? All right, um, comments from the public on consent items. So if anyone in the public, either in person or online, has a comment about anything on the consent agenda, please put your first and last name in the chat and the item that you would like to speak about. Are there? Oh, okay. Give it like 10 more seconds. Give it a full 30 seconds. Okay, all right, we can close the chat. All right, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, I move to approve as amended.
I second.
All right, any questions or comments? Sheldon, I'll start with you, so we don't forget.
Nope, I like the consent agenda and have any questions or comments.
Okay. Mia, Alan, or Julian, do you guys have any questions about anything that's on the consent agenda? It's under number 11, those 18 items under... Not sure if you had a chance to look at it in full, but if you have any questions or comments, this is the time you would ask them.
So with the consent agenda, it's a bunch of kind of like unexciting kind of contract stuff that we just move to approve all at once instead of individually voting on 18 different items. That's kind of process-wise. But if something ever does become contentious or we want to talk about more, we can pull it off of the consent agenda and then it's like on the table and then we can talk about that specific item and vote on that specific item or amend or something like that.
So any questions or comments?
I only have one.
Okay, go ahead.
It's just on the one about Health Connected and the dates on it. I was just wondering if this was part of the new staff approved, the expansion of the professional development days that they agreed to, and then also who's participating? It sounds like it's just middle schools, middle...
Middle school, high school.
But it's only some teachers, it's not all of them.
It's the teachers that will be expected to teach the curriculum or support the curriculum for the human interaction.
Okay, so then is it part of that approval?
Yes, the provider that they selected, Health Connect.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, comments from the public on action items. If anyone in person or online has a comment about anything on the action item agenda, now is the time to put your first and last name in the chat and the item that you would like to speak about. All right, was there anyone? I didn't see anything. No. All right, we can close the chat on this. All right, first action item, AB 361, so I'll explain for the school board members here. Every meeting, we, since we're still in the pandemic, we have to assess the health conditions and decide if we want to continue meeting hybrid or fully in person, no hybrid, or just online. So, do you have a preference? Do you want to stay hybrid, go online, fully in person?
I vote for hybrid.
Yeah. Alan? Hybrid.
Yeah.
Hybrid. Julian? Okay. All right, so...
As always, I have motion to stay in hybrid as long as legally possible because it makes it more accessible for more people to join us.
My second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of the 22, 23 revised PFT counselor, PFT lead counselor, PFT nurses, school psychologists, and speech salary schedules.
I move to approve the new salary schedules.
Did you want to say something, Jason?
Do you want me to say anything about them?
You don't have to, I just didn't know if you wanted to.
Okay, I tried to be very descriptive in the...
You were very descriptive.
Okay.
Okay.
So, were there any questions on it? Okay, all right.
All right, thanks, Alan.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of the provisional internship permit for Tricia, I'm going to mess up her name.
Hubacher.
Hubacher, somebody, why can't I say her name? To teach an R S P class at Pen Grove for the upcoming school year.
So, we are in a situation where we have a number of vacancies for special education and not a lot of candidates that are qualified, and so we're working to find people that are ready to enter programs, and Tricia's one of them, as with the next item as well. So, we're glad that we were able to find her and we're excited for her to come and work for us.
I move to approve the conditional internship permit for Tricia Hubacher? Did I say that right? Hugh? My second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, same for Emily and I, I'm going to try to say her last name.
Quinn Libin.
Quinn Libin. Yeah, so this is a similar situation for the special day class at Petaluma Junior High School. And again, we're glad we were able to find Emily. She's ready to, ready for the challenge.
Right. Thank goodness.
And I move to approve this provisional internship permit request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, business services.
Oh my God, it's our first resolution of the calendar year, or the fiscal year.
You are so excited about it, too.
I am. We don't have, yeah.
Hey.
Look, got to find the little joys, President Pahn.
I move to approve Resolution 2223-01 of the Board of Education.
I'll second, so Chris can explain.
Yeah, so you can... We brought it forward just to provide joy.
Thank you!
So this is literally just a perfunctory resolution authorizing me to transfer money as needed between accounts. Generally, a lot of those are done by the school sites, but we approve them also. It's literally just giving us authorization. And then, of course, you know, the board approves all of the formal budget transfers when we bring them to the board.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Sheldon, were you trying to say something?
I said aye.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, so, discussion information items, Williams Settlement Quarterly Report.
Do we need to do comments on discussion items?
Oh, thank you. Comments from the public on discussion information items. If anyone has a comment on this one item, please put your first and last name in the chat. We'll leave it open just for like half a minute.
Regular one, yeah. Never when you need it.
Okay, all right, we can close the chat. All right. Do you want to say something about this, Jason?
There were zero complaints, so that is good news.
Very happy to hear that.
Always good.
Okay, future business. So Julian, Alan, and Mia, this is the time where if there's something that you would like to see discussed in the future at a board meeting, this is the time to...
No pressure right now, but if there's something burning.
Any of you guys have anything right now?
Feel bad if you don't at the moment.
I know you do, Mia. No, she has something.
Go ahead.
So, in the running, a comment in the past from the public about benefits in schools, I have a new teaching program that I believe will be beneficial for students in, perhaps to stopping the problem of poverty at birth. And this is called the Sandy Hook Program. Basically, this is a selection of courses that can be taken from children depending on the course. For example, one of them is the fourth or 12th, but the rest are like the driving feature. And these courses basically will help the children become more into their surroundings of society that they're in, that they're in, build the trap of how to avoid social isolation and how to pick that out. And if they do see any warning signs arising from any students or staff, where to report that and when to report that if necessary. It's completely free. We need a registration at the school. So it would be nice if we could have that just meant to put in the school.
Could we maybe have a presentation from them? Did you find out if there was a local organizer for Sandy Hook that would be able to come for? We can research it. It doesn't matter if you know or not. You did? Of course you did.
There we go. Then we do have a local presenter.
Thank you. Alan? Do you have any? If you don't, it's fine. Okay, any of our adult board members?
Still can't believe I counted.
Good.
Yeah, all right.
I think he said he's good.
Yeah. I'm just reading the captions.
I know, we've never had the captions before. That's really cool.
Okay, so with that...
I have one. I said I was going to do it yesterday. It was just, it was just a communication, a strategic plan. You know, in future business, to create a strategic plan for communication and marketing.
Or to hear what they do come up with, because it sounds like they're already working on it.
Yeah, it does. Just a presentation about it. Or, I just, I just am requesting that we do one, and since it seems to be in the works anyway, you know, I'm really excited about it, so.
Hey, anyone else? No? Okay, so with that, we are adjourned.
First real meeting of the year. Yeah.